The six thirty P M. I will call the April. What is today's day? Twenty seventh, I'm sorry, twenty seventh, twenty twenty planning commission meeting to order. Let the roll call, let the roles reflect that all commissioners are present virtually via Zoom. As you know, government agencies, schools, businesses and organizations around our country are being asked to take extraordinary measures to protect our communities from the spread of COVID nineteen. The city of Burnsville is committed to complying with recommendations from the C D C and the state and federal governments to protect everyone's health. Current recommendations call for everyone to practice social distancing as much as possible. To comply with these measures, tonight's planning commission meeting will be held virtually by using Zoom. As Chair, I will be leading the planning commission meeting and the public is welcome to participate when invited throughout the meeting. Additional instructions on how to participate are posted online at W W W dot Burnsville M N dot gov in the public meeting calendar. As usual, tonight's meeting is available for viewing on B C T V and on the city's website. If you're unable to participate this evening and would like to submit public testimony, I encourage you to send in your comments to city staff. Sarah Madden at S A R A H dot M A D D E N at Burnsville M N dot gov or Deb Gross at D E B dot G A R R O S S at Burnsville M N dot gov. Or mail your comments via postal mail to one zero zero Civic Center Parkway, Burnsville, Minnesota, five five three three seven. You may participate in the meeting tonight online by going to H T T P S colon forward slash forward slash Zoom dot U S forward slash join and use the meeting ID nine five eight three five four four eight eight one three and the password two two one seven eight zero. Once you are logged into the meeting, please use the chat feature to tell the moderator which item you wish to speak to. You may also call into the Zoom meeting at six five one three seven two eight two nine nine. For each public hearing, I will provide an opportunity for callers to speak to that specific item and I will provide more instructions then. You will be muted until that time. So moving on to the agenda, the first item on the agenda is to adopt the agenda. Does staff have any changes?
None from staff.
Commissioners, any changes? Okay, does it look like any, is there a motion? Commissioner Roberts.
I move to adopt the agenda. Or are we on the minutes of the agenda?
The agenda.
Agenda. I moved to adopt the agenda.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Commissioner Awad.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? See none. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Awad.
Hi.
Commissioner Henderson.
I.
Commissioner John.
Hi.
Commissioner Roberts.
Hi.
Commissioner Timberman.
Hi.
Thank you.
Motion carries. So the second item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from the April thirteenth, twenty twenty planning commission meeting. Staff, any changes?
None from staff.
Commissioners, changes? See none. Is there a motion? Commissioner John.
I make the motion that we accept the minutes from the four thirteen meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
That was by Commissioner Timberman. Is there any further discussion? See none. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Awad.
Hi.
Commissioner Henderson.
I.
Commissioner John.
Hi.
Commissioner Roberts. Commissioner Timberman.
Hi.
Motion carries. Moving on to the third item of the agenda, it is a public hearing for Alex Dorin Shenko for a conditional use permit amendment for an auto sales rental lot used for vehicles in the B three general business zone preliminary and final plat of a one lot commercial subdivision for Doroschenko addition located at one seven zero five Highway thirteen east presented by city planner Deb Gross.
Thank you, commissioners. Is the presentation up?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. The application is for conditional use permit amendment. The applicant owns another business in Burnsville and they would like to purchase this site. The project does require a conditional use and that's for an auto sales rental lot in the B three zoning district. And then in addition to that, because the property has not been platted previously and is a meet and balance parcel because they need the land use clearance, they also need to plat the property. So we have the preliminary and final plat of Doroschenko addition, which is attached. The property is at seventeen zero five Highway thirteen east. Next slide, please. The map on the left is the site location map and gives the zoning of the adjacent properties. Highway thirteen is to the north, but there is a small piece of property between the highway and the subject site. So we are looking at a property that really has frontage on one hundred and twenty first street alone when we're talking about the plat. On the right hand side is the pictometry and this gives you an overhead or bird's eye view of the property. And the building has been in existence for many, many years. There's been many tenants in there and the site pretty much will remain as is. The only improvement that is proposed is to stripe the parking lot. Next slide. As far as the history of the parcel, it was first developed in nineteen sixty six as a gas station and it had a canopy. And when we get a little bit further on, you'll see where that canopy was. Some of that information is still visible on site. And in nineteen eighty one, there was a building addition, which gets us to the size of the building that's there now, and that was for Big A Auto Parts, which was a retail establishment selling automobile accessories. In nineteen ninety four, Recycled Minnesota received an interim use permit to use the building for a couple of years. They relocated from a different site in Burnsville and needed this for a short period of time. Then in nineteen ninety seven, that I U P was extended. The most recent tenant in the building was Florida Oriental Market and they had been there since two thousand and six. Next slide. For the development summary chart, the subject site is almost, well, twenty two thousand five hundred square feet. The minimum lot size requirement is twenty thousand, so the lot does conform to the lot area requirements of the subdivision ordinance, the existing building, five thousand five hundred thirty five square feet, and there are no changes proposed to that. The building coverage is twenty five percent, which again is in line with the B three zone and impervious surface coverage existing and proposed is sixteen thousand nine hundred and seventy five square feet. As far as the existing green space on the site, this was significantly improved when the interim use permit was approved for the Recycled Minnesota project, so they are at twenty five percent. And then as far as green space within the parking lot or rental sales lots, that is eight percent. Typically, you would see in a B three zone that being three percent, but the sales and rental lot does require additional landscaping. Building perimeter landscape is supposed to be at fifty percent. It's a little bit short on here as far as it's all existing and it's at forty seven percent, but that's only about ten feet short of meeting that fifty percent standard. And all of these, because there's not going to be any construction on the site or any other site improvements, anything that doesn't meet the current ordinance is considered to be legal nonconforming. So it was allowed at the time that the project was initially approved or subsequently approved, but it does not need current ordinance today. In terms of the parking required, the building is just going to be used for office and some storage for the sales rental lot. They're only required to have eleven stalls. There are twenty five stalls on site, so thirteen of those will be used for vehicle storage. Next slide, please. Existing conditions are shown on this plan and basically you have the existing building here, Highway thirteen to the north and then one hundred and twenty first street is the frontage where the the property fronts. The, as I said, the subject site will continue to be as it exists. These are the old boondings, if you will, that the canopy was once constructed on, got the parking lot and the majority of the parking will occur on the southern side of the site. On the southern side of the building, there are two overhead doors in approximately this location and they will remain on the building as is. Next slide. This is an aerial photo. It was provided for the site plan for the auto sales rental lot. And as you can see, basically, we've got the parking area. There are a couple of parking spaces that are located along the westerly side and some additional spaces in this area. There's also a couple of spaces. I believe there's three spaces facing north. And then we've got the ADA accessible parking spaces in this location. And as I indicated, there will not be any changes to the interior of the building. This area back here shows where the overhead doors are. In looking at the site, in this location here, there is one freestanding sign and then there is also another freestanding sign in this location and we'll be talking about that shortly. They do have the required number of parking spaces, so they do comply with the ordinance in terms of parking. In addition to that, they've indicated that no service repair or maintenance is proposed at the building. Next slide, please. In terms of green space, this is what's known as a near map photo and you can see the existing trees that are on site in these locations. What happened in the nineties with the interim use permit was all of this area used to be blacktop. So the improvements in order for the recycle recycling operation to go in included removing all of this area and turning that back to green space. In addition, this was all paved blacktop and this area was returned to green space. So as you can see, in terms of building perimeter landscaping, even though they're a little bit short by ten feet, all of this was added with that earlier interim use permit. So from a staff perspective, we feel comfortable. It is a legal nonconforming situation, but it's only ten feet difference. And really, the improvements that were required when this recycling facility went in remain in place and the the site is in good condition for that standpoint. There is, in this corner of the property, a, an existing dumpster. Dumpsters do need to be screened or they need to be located within the principal building. When this project was approved and in the earlier years, they did store trash inside the building. If they want to continue to have outdoor storage, they can do that, but they do need to provide a trash enclosure and screening that meets the ordinance or they can store trash within the building and those are conditions that have been added. In terms of additional screening, the ordinance does require when you have head in parking stalls that face a adjacent property or a public right of way, that they need to have landscape screening between three and four feet. Staff is recommending that some evergreen shrubs be installed on the north location here and also where there are openings along the south, primarily in these locations. And then the site will meet the screening standards. There are ever, or excuse me, existing mature trees that are located along one hundred and twenty first street. This is the one access and when you come in here, you have turning movements, not only to use these parking spaces, but these parking spaces and then the ADA accessible spaces in here. With these trees already being mature, staff is not recommending additional screening along here primarily for safety for vehicles entering and exiting the site and then if there's any pedestrian traffic. Next slide, please. In terms of signage, there is existing signage on the site. The one wall sign is with the former tenant that was in the building, Florida Oriental Market. There's also, this sign is a budding that northerly parking area. It's a freestanding sign and then there is an additional freestanding sign in this location that is facing one hundred and twenty first street. In terms of overall signage, they are well within, with these existing signs, well within the amount of signage that they can have. The only conditions that staff is recommending is before they install new signage for their business, they would need to come in and obtain a sign permit from the city. And then also on this particular sign, the base is damaged, so we have a condition also recommending that this be maintained and fixed according to the ordinance. Next slide, please. As far as the preliminary plat, very simple. It's a one lot plat. It does meet the requirements of the ordinance. One thing that I would like to call your attention to is that sign we were just looking at along one hundred and twenty first street. Once the property is platted, this is going to be within a drainage and utility easement. This is something that we've seen before, especially with when we're looking at plating these properties that have already been developed. A condition is added that the applicant work with the city engineer to either work out an encroachment agreement so that sign can remain there or some other mechanism to allow the signage to remain. So that is also a condition. Next slide, please. The final plat, very straightforward. We get the easements that'll be dedicated as part of the project site. This was sent to Mindat even though it's not directly a budding Mindat right of way. We did send it to them. They do not have any issues with it. The, we did receive one email from an applicant that was included in your packet, Mr. John Ramp. And he has an objection to the use of the site. He prefers not to see it to be a auto sales rental lot. Next slide, please. So for the project itself, I'd like to draw the attention to the commissioners. There are actually nine conditions. I think in your packet, it will show ten. And that's because what we try to do is to have a number of these things that would need to be met in the future, met by a specific date. The reason for that is they're not making any physical improvements to the site other than the striping, so there's not a building permit per se. Usually, we would condition a number of things on the building permit application and what we've done here instead is just given them a few months to be able to comply. The conditions associated with this, number one, that the previous C U Ps and I U Ps remain in full force and effect those conditions. Also, number two, this is a general condition. We want to note that this conditional use permit would also allow for other uses that are permitted in the underlying B three zone or accessory that they could be used at that site. It's not exclusive just to the auto sales rental lot. That is a conditional use and that's why they're here. The sign permit, we indicated they need to obtain a sign permit before changing any exterior signs at the site. Also, the fire department recommended that no auto bodywork or flammable spray finishing operations be allowed in the building. At this point in time, it is not constructed in order to be able to provide the fire suppression for that. So we have added that, but indicated that in the future, should they want to do something, it would need to be approved then by the fire marshal and building official. And then final plat approval will be subject to preliminary plat approval. And the items that would need to be met before the end of July would be the evergreen shrubs that are installed along the northerly and southerly side of the parking lot to meet the parking lot screening standards. That the trash and recyclables either need to be stored inside the building or provide a trash enclosure or something needing the setback in screening requirements of the ordinance. The freestanding sign needs to be repaired along one hundred and twenty first street. And then the applicant will need to work with the city engineer on the encroachment agreement or other option for that sign to remain within that newly planted easement. With that, I can stand for questions.
Great. Thank you, Deb. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner John?
Yeah, I have two questions. That's okay, I'm sure. The first question is, is where, you said he owns two properties. Where's the other property he currently owns?
I do not have that information. I don't know if Mr. Doroschenko or Mr. Meehan are online and would be able to address that for the applicant.
I think the applicant is online. I don't know if we can switch him over so he can speak. Mr. Doroschenko?
Yes. Uh, yeah, hello, everybody. Uh, I do have an empty property. I do have my
Let me interrupt you for a second. You mute one of your devices because you're echoing.
Yeah, do you hear me now?
Yeah, it's a little bit. Go ahead, Mr. Doroschenko. Let's see how you sound now.
Yeah, do you hear me now?
Yes, that's better. Thank you.
Okay. I don't have any two property in the Burnsville. I was rent property here in the Burnsville about over twelve years. Now I decided to buy something.
And then if I may, my second question is, is what type of rental auto sales type of place is this? Are we talking like a progressive one? That's further down the road? Are we looking like a used car lot kind of?
Yeah, it's a used car parking lot. Just need a parking lot. That's all.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Awad.
Yeah, my question is for Ms. Gross. Just kind of a procedural question. Condition number five is that the final plat is subject to the approval of the preliminary plat. Who does those approvals? Like who approves the preliminary plat to approve the final plat?
Thank you, commissioners and Madam Chair. The approval authority for preliminary and final plant is the city council.
Thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners? Okay, see none. We will move to the public hearing portion. However, before I open the public meeting, I want to state that if you wish to speak to this item and are on the Zoom meeting, please use either the chat feature or raise your hand feature and the moderator will put you in a queue. Once I call your name to speak, the moderator will unmute you. Then please state your name and address for the record. And with that, I will open the public hearing at six fifty four P M.
Hello. My name is Dave Kennedy, one three eight one three Frontier Lane in Burnsville. Am I being seen at this point?
Yes. Yeah, we see you. We hear you.
Okay, good. Sorry, we're, I have a little technical difficulty here. I was a independent auto dealer in Burnsville myself from nineteen ninety nine to two thousand and fifteen. I am a past president of the Northland Independent Auto Dealers Association and the Minnesota Independent Auto Dealers Association. That's how I came to know Alex and I wanted to let you know he is a wonderful dealer, is in good standing with our associations. He has no consumer problems. When he mentions he, it's going to be a parking lot, it's going to be an independent auto dealership. Alex deals in high end imports, quality vehicles, does not have any customer relations problems. He's very excited now to go from renting facilities. He's been in Burnsville's for twelve years since two thousand and eight and he's very excited that he's in a position to buy a property. He has no problems with any of the conditions. He's been working hard, spending money on plating, soil testing. He already has quite an investment in this property. And I think Deb has done a wonderful job in putting this packet together and making it feasible for Alex to be a commercial property owner. Thank you for hearing me.
Great. Thank you. Okay, it doesn't look like there's anybody else who would like to speak so, that are participating on Zoom. So at this time, I will ask if there are any telephone callers wishing to speak. If so, please press star nine to raise your hand and I will call on you. To speak, press star six to unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record. Jeff Meehan, looks like he would like to speak. Jeff, can you unmute yourself, please?
Hello, commissioners. Hi, my name is Jeff Meehan and I've been working with Alex Doroschenko, helping him as his real estate agent to acquire the property. I just had a small detail question for Deb Gross regarding the evergreen shrubs. I think that maybe you had a pointer or something you're using, but we couldn't see it. And I just wanted to know, the northerly part of the property and the southerly part, that the property seems to be at a diagonal, so I'm not sure which is considered north. Is that the Highway thirteen side?
Um, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Mr. Meehan, yes, that would be the Highway thirteen side and then the Yeah, it's hard because you're right, it sits as a diagonal. So basically, we're talking, there are three parking stalls right by that freestanding sign.
Sure.
Faces Highway thirteen, so some evergreen shrubs there and then on the opposite side of the lot, there are some openings where there isn't anything closer to one hundred and twenty first street. So just to add a few evergreen shrubs in that area too.
Okay, so nothing necessary on the one hundred and twenty first side?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else wishing to speak about this item? Okay, it doesn't appear to be anybody else wishing to speak, so I will close the public hearing at six fifty nine P M. Commissioners, any comments or questions? Commissioner Timberman. You need to unmute yourself.
Thank you, Chair. I guess I should have asked this to Ms. Gross, but I just thought of it. As far as the parking situation, will there be employees that will need any
that will need any access to those stalls, or will it simply be the vehicles that are for sale that will be using those parking stalls?
Thank you Madam Chair and Commissioners. The site only requires eleven stalls, so they do have those. And then they have shorter stalls that are nine by sixteen as opposed to nine by eighteen. And those shorter stalls are all located along the southerly or kind of the back part of the property there. Mr. Doroshenko has himself, I don't believe there are other employees or there may be just one. So we do not anticipate any issues with parking for employees or for folks coming in to look at any of the vehicles for purchase or for him to operate, their parking should be adequate for him.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion or questions Commissioners? Is there a motion? Commissioner Roberts?
Yeah, thank you Chair, yeah, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to move that the planning commission recommend to the City Council approval of the CUP amendment to allow an auto sales rental lot and preliminary and final plat of a one lot commercial subdivision of Doroshenko addition at one seven zero five highway thirteen east, subject to the following conditions, on our list, there's ten, and I noticed that number six is actually the listing of the following conditions shall be met no later than July thirty-first, two thousand twenty, does that need to be an actual number? Because on the presentation, it wasn't a number, it was actually just a statement, Deb?
It does not need to be a number.
Okay, so it would actually be nine?
Correct.
Okay, subject to the following nine conditions that are listed in our in our minutes, in our packet.
Great, thanks. Commissioner Awad?
I will second the motion.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Timmerman?
I just wanted to comment on Mr. Ramp's email that we recognize it, we've read it, we understand his concern. This is a permitted use in the B-three zoning with the city being allowed to add the conditions which they've done and which we're now approving, so I don't want you to think, Mr. Ramp, that we have overlooked your concern, but at this point, because of the existing zoning and the existing allowed use, the planning commission our, our hands are tied on, on that particular issue, so, but thank you for reaching out and providing your concern to us.
Any further discussion? Okay, see none, can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Awad?
Hi.
Commissioner Henderson?
Hi.
Commissioner John?
Hi.
Commissioner Roberts?
Hi.
Commissioner Timmerman?
Hi.
Okay, motion carries and this item will be on the May fifth City Council meeting agenda. So moving on to item four, which is to hold a public hearing for Towering Pines RR LLC and Lakeside Capital RR LLC for planned unit development amendment to allow multiple buildings on one lot and construction of a new clubhouse in the R-three B High Density Residential Zone preliminary and final plat of a one lot multifamily residential subdivision of River Ridge Apartments Edition located at one two nine zero one County Road five, presented by City Planner Deb Gross.
Thank you Madam Chair and Commissioners, can we have the presentation up, please? Okay, can you still hear me?
Yes.
I'm having some technical issues here. As, as presented, we are, this is a very similar application to the last in that we've got an existing meets and bounds property of record that has been developed for a number of decades. But they are looking to amend their planned unit development and to, really the only change will be to add a clubhouse building to the site, which will be added just south of the existing swimming pool. And then they are also looking to increase the number of apartments from the initial hundred and twelve units that was approved back in the early seventies, to add five additional units for a total of one hundred and seventeen units. And the plat that we'll be discussing is going to be called River Ridge Apartments Edition, next slide, please. The subject site, Abuts County Road five. And there's a little more than an acre and a half of the subject site that is going to be dedicated in the plat to Dakota County. And then in addition to that, we have public drainage and utility easements that will be provided through this plat dedication as well. As I said, the site abuts the county road, we've got single-family residential to the west. To the north is our commercial zoning, there's a kinder care located up there. There is actually, one of the applications that you'll be seeing shortly is on this adjacent property, this is where the International Outreach Church site is. And then single-family to the south, and then there is a small commercial property that was developed as a Brooks Superett years and years ago, is now a church, so that actually has an R-one zoning as well. They'd like you to take a look at is the approvals, and this is what is existing out there, we basically have got the five apartment buildings in this location, and then there are three garages north, there's another garage in this location, and one to the south. Next slide, please. So in nineteen sixty-nine, that is when the planned unit development was actually approved for this apartment complex. And then it was later constructed, everything was constructed and completed, I believe, around nineteen seventy-one. Again, in that, they had a hundred and twelve apartment units in the five buildings, the three garages, the swimming pool. And then there's also a green space recreation area to the south, and these are the things that are required to provide for the folks living within the development. And then in twenty thirteen, there was a variance that the city approved for their existing freestanding sign. County Road five has been improved many times over the years since this property was first developed. And one of the more recent projects was the County Road five highway thirteen interchange project, which resulted in the bridge now that crosses over highway thirteen. And when that project went in, there was some land that was required to be dedicated from this subject site. And that caused their sign to be non-conforming, so the city granted a one-foot setback variance for that sign to be located that close to the right of way. And that was back in twenty thirteen, next slide. Just to give you an example, on this slide, left is north and then right is south, and the county road would be along the bottom part of the screen, if you will. So the property has developed based on what it was planned to be developed back in nineteen sixty-nine, next slide. This is the land title survey, again, because it's such a long property, we have north is to the left and south is to the right. When we were talking before, we've got the existing apartments, here are two of them, this is where the swimming pool is located. And the clubhouse is going to be located just south of the swimming pool. The other recreation area that I had indicated is an open space recreation area, there's an apartment building here. And then this is a garage, another apartment, and another apartment. So this area in through here is the other green space, open recreation area for the site, next slide. In looking at, this is just part of the subject site, but because the the clubhouse building is going to be relatively small in relation to the entire site. This is a little bit blown up site plan, that basically shows that this will be the clubhouse constructed in this location, then County Road five is to the left. Next slide. This is a planned unit development, so we do need to look at, in terms of the planned unit development, what are the benefits? And what are the deviations that are requested? In this case, the new clubhouse is going to add recreation facilities for all of the apartment neighborhood, including a social room, a fitness room. We're going to be moving their leasing office from the fully moved apartment building into this building, it will provide a mail package room, restrooms outside, restrooms will be inside the facility, but that will be right there by the swimming pool, which they've never had before. So it will be really a significant upgrade for the amenities and for the enjoyment of the residents. The clubhouse will actually provide more linear feet of perimeter landscaping, seventy-eight percent than the fifty percent standard, so that is a benefit. They are relocating their current leasing office to the new clubhouse. And when the leasing office and the existing fitness room are taken out of that apartment, then what they will do is add additional apartment units back into the apartment building in those vacated spaces that will now be in the clubhouse. There will also be a new sidewalk that will connect to the internal private sidewalk system within the development to County Road five sidewalk that is on east side. And then the subject site also exceeds the minimum lot width standard at three hundred feet as opposed to the hundred foot standard, and that would be based on the north property line, next slide. In terms of PUD deviations, there are two, and these are really existing conditions. But because it's a planned unit development, we're trying to identify things associated with this particular project. So there is a deviation in the lot size standard because the existing lot size will be smaller than the requirement related to the number of units that are included. And also the reason for that being lesser is because of that large amount of right of way that's going to be dedicated to County Road five. Staff supports that condition. Also, a deviation is requested, and this is related to their existing garage parking stalls to the deviation is to allow fifty-two as opposed to one hundred and seventeen covered parking stalls, if that is required by the current ordinance, again, this is an existing situation and staff is supportive of that. Next slide. In terms of the development summary chart, again, kind of what's interesting here is just the large amount of right of way. It is proposed to be dedicated, one point five acres. And that is the rationale that staff supports some of the lot deviations for. The building is really quite small, one thousand eight hundred and fifty-six square feet. The total impervious surface that will be added is about twenty-seven hundred square feet, and that includes basically the sidewalk areas around the building itself, impervious surface to be added is one percent of the entire site. They do have thirty-one percent of existing green space. We did not count the green space within the parking area, just because it's an existing condition and really that's not even a standard that is typically applicable for this type of development. As I indicated, the building perimeter landscaping is more than the minimum standard. In terms of parking, the city just updated our parking ordinance. In the original planned unit development, they had a hundred and sixty-eight parking stalls and fifty-eight of those were in the three garages. What is existing on the site today, based on their survey information, is there two hundred and nine parking stalls and fifty-two are within garages. The new ordinance would require two hundred and five stalls, so overall, they do have that with the two hundred and nine. But it also would require one hundred and seventeen or one stall per apartment unit to be inside or covered parking, and they do not have that, they have the fifty-two stalls that are in the garages, so that is the deviation that's requested. Next slide. Again, this will be the site plan that we were just looking at with the proposed building. Basically, the new sidewalk is going to be in this location and the leasing office will be facing west. The, there will be additional sidewalks installed connecting to the internal sidewalks within the development that are available or for access for all people in all of the apartment buildings to get safely to the pool. The site too will have fencing basically connecting up to the building around the pool. So it have a very safe access where people can be going in and out of the building in this location. There's also an entrance on the east and then to the leasing office, that would be the main entrance or front of the building. And this would be the west elevation that's proposed of the building. They do have a canopy over the entrance and some columns with some stone detail. The siding that's proposed is a mix of vertical siding, the roof is proposed to have a metal standing seam roof, which is a permitted material within the high-density residential zoning district, next slide, please. And then this is a look at the north elevation, again with the additional stone accents, they have some vertical siding, and then this would be reflective of stucco which is on the existing apartment buildings, so the proposed materials and what they are using are really complementary to the existing apartment buildings out on the property, next slide, please. And then this shows the south and east elevations, and these are facing the interior of the project site, next slide. The materials, we included photos of them, we have the stone accents basically through here, and then the roofing and window materials, kind of this anodized dark brown color, and then we have some additional samples and colors that they are showing, next slide. This is the floor plan for the site, and this is, again, exactly how the site will lay out. Highway or County Road five, excuse me, is in this location. So you'll have the main entrance to the building when people are coming in for the leasing office is in this location, so they've got new reception area and office, there's conference room facilities, parcel drop-offs, which is something that is newer for the residents. And then for the community, they've got a community room, a fitness center. Also, there is an existing freestanding building that houses the pool equipment now. That will be removed, and then the pool equipment is going to be moved with inside this particular building. And then also the restroom, some storage space, next slide, please. In terms of landscaping, they do meet the city's standard and in fact are actually proposing more landscaping, perimeter landscaping and the ordinance requires, and it will be a nice mix of different materials, different colors throughout the season, and it does meet the, the ordinance, next slide. This is the preliminary plat, and in looking at it, it's very busy. Hard to, it's hard to see on a smaller screen like this. In terms of the plat, they're basically just creating one lot out of the existing property. Except that they are dedicating the right of way that's requested to be dedicated by Dakota County. And then in addition to that, just to note, there are a couple of existing improvements that are going to be, again, within the new easements that are going to be planted. There's a small retaining wall in this location, the sign is in this location right here. So although it still meets that one-foot setback, it is going to now be within a drainage and utility easement. And then there are a couple of small areas where there are some landscaping and other improvements that will also be within those drainage and utility easements. So just like the last application, in this application, we've included a condition that the applicant work with the city engineer to either provide encroachment agreements or some other mechanism to recognize and allow those improvements within the newly planted right of way and utility easements, next slide, please. In terms of drainage and the utility plan, there's going to be a small amount of grading taking place on the site, really to prepare the area for the new building. The drainage, pretty much everything is in place on the site. They do also have underground irrigation. There will be a couple of utilities that need to be relocated. These are private utilities that need to be relocated so they're not within the building footprint. But basically then the drainage will be directed by the grading around the building and to the north. And then there's going to be a stormwater drain or catch basin in this area. So it's not a lot of impervious surface, but it will be sent and treated. The, let's see. There is a little bit more just off of this slide that includes a little bit of grading. But again, really in terms of the overall development, very insignificant in terms of standard building permit, really just trying to get the building on the site. Next slide, please. Then this will be the final plat, again, one lot, one block. Something I wanted to draw your attention to is there are a number of existing overhead power line easements and gas line easements. None of these are in areas that will be affected by the proposed clubhouse development or grading. And the applicant has worked with all of the utility companies to gain their approval in terms of the proposed project. Next slide, please. In terms of this, staff is recommending approval of both the PUD amendment, the preliminary and final plat with the standard types of conditions that previously approved conditional use permit and PUDs shall remain, of course, in effect. The uses again listed as permitted and accessory in the underlying high density or R three B residential zoning district would be allowed in addition to the clubhouse. Number three, that they would provide written documentation from Dakota County, just allowing the existing encroachments that there are within their right of way. And that information be provided to the city before issuance of the building permit. The final plat is subject to approval of the preliminary plat. And the applicant would need to work with the city engineer on those few items that do encroach within the new easements. There will be park dedication fees that will be required for the additional apartment units being created, and that information has been provided to the applicant. The, prior to building permit issuance, they would also need to provide documentation that the final plat has been recorded with Dakota County. And then number eight is not really a condition, but really just a stipulation that total number of apartment units that approved for this planned unit development will be changed to one hundred and seventeen units. And with that, I can stand for questions.
Great, thanks Deb. Commissioners, questions? Commissioner John.
Thank you for such a detailed explanation. Excellent done, well done. My question is on the garage, on the covered parking, we require fifty-two of them or we require a hundred and seventeen, what's the reason behind the requirement behind covered parking?
Actually, for commissioners, the requirement was actually just decreased. The, I believe that they used to require one and a half covered units or covered spaces per apartment unit. And we did reduce that to one. So if we apply today's standard, that's why there would be a hundred and seventeen covered spaces or in indoor spaces required. They only have fifty-two, which is what they've had out there for years. Again, because their existing conditions and this is a clubhouse, really does not have an effect in terms of the garages, those types of things. Staff is recommending that the parking crew is outlined in their report.
Commissioner Wad.
Thank you, Ms. Gross. You mentioned that one and a half acres of the parcel was going to be dedicated to Dakota County. Is that because part of the original property is, is contains Highway five, as Highway five has expanded over the years? So part of the property is in Highway five?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, great. I have a second question too, and this may be more for the applicant. The plans show that the roofing material is going to be standing seam, metal roofing, and it looks like the materials that were displayed, it looked more like a metal shake. Cause I'm just, point of clarification, is it standing seam or is it, is it going to be a metal shake?
I'd like the applicant to address that.
Is it Mark Gudinger?
I could address that if you want me to.
Oh, okay.
Just because I've, I've worked with metal roofing, are you okay with that, Ollie?
Sure, I'm just curious, yeah.
But it was just the sample that we saw happened to be set up vertically rather than horizontally. But if you would have took that sample and laid it down horizontally, basically that would have been a sample of the roofing color and how it's worked out. With the ridges going from the top of the ridge down to the end of it, yeah. If that answered your question or not, I'm not sure. I see that we have the applicant here, so he might be able to answer better.
Are you able to hear me?
Yep, go ahead, Mark.
Okay, yeah, Mark Giddinger. And thank you, Ms. Gross. That was an excellent summary of the project. The material you saw the photo of is what the contractor has kind of come in and suggested we use instead of the standing seam. He says it's a superior newer product. And I, I can't speak to the technical issues of that if there's any, you know, but we'll, we'll probably go with his recommendation. It's, it's a newer product and apparently it, it's, it's just superior for this application.
Sure, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for me?
Commissioner Roberts.
Actually, it's not a question, it's actually just a statement to you guys. And my hats off to you two putting this together. It looks like it's something you guys really needed, and it's very well done. So I think it's a great addition to what you got going on over there.
Thank you, thank you. The history of this property, going back to when we bought it, when we closed, it was held by a bank in receivership with two of the, two of the back buildings were actually closed at the time. And yeah, we've, this, this is kind of what we're thinking of as phase two to improve the property. So we're very excited. We think it'll be a really great addition for the residents.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any other comments, questions? Okay, so with that, I will move on to the public hearing. But just as a reminder, if you are on the Zoom meeting, I would like to speak to this. Please use either the chat feature or raise your hand feature, and the moderator will put you in the queue. Once I call your name to speak, the moderator will unmute you. Then please state your name and address for the record. So with that, I will open the public hearing at seven twenty-eight PM. It doesn't look like there's anybody wishing to speak. I'll move on to the telephone callers. If there's anybody calling in who would like to speak about this, please press star nine to raise your hand, and I will call on you to speak, press star six to unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record. Doesn't appear to be anybody wishing to speak about this item. So I will close the public hearing at seven twenty-nine PM. Commissioners, any other comments, questions, concerns? Commissioner John.
Yeah, I'm really excited about this for the tenants at the apartment complex. So with that, I would like to make a motion that the planning commission recommend the city council the approval of the preliminary and final plat and PUD amendment to construction of a new clubhouse at River Ridge Apartments, subject to the following listed eight conditions.
Commissioner Timmerman.
I would like to second that and just comment that when I went over there today, I noticed all of those nice solar panels on the garages. So kudos to the owners on that as well, thank you.
Any other comments, concerns? Hey, see none, can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Wad.
Hi.
Commissioner Henderson.
Hi.
Commissioner John.
Hi.
Commissioner Roberts.
Hi.
Commissioner Timmerman.
Hi.
Okay, so the motion carries, and this item will be on the May fifth city council meeting agenda. Moving on to item five, and that is to hold a public hearing on the application from International Outreach Church for a preliminary and final plat approval of a one lot subdivision to be known as International Outreach Edition Conditional Use Permit Amendment to allow multiple buildings on one lot and a new religious institution building. And a variance from City Code Section ten dash seven dash twenty-six dash D subdivision seven, which requires non-surmountable curbing along the perimeter of off-street parking areas to eliminate non-surmountable parking related to the parking area within ten feet of the Magellan Pipeline located at one five one two Wood Hill Road, presented by city planner Sarah Madden.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, planning commissioners. Wait for that to come up. All right. And so the purpose of this item is to conduct this public hearing for three land use clearances and the preliminary and final plat for the expansion of an existing religious institution in Burnsville. Next slide, please. So the subject site is a three point one five acre property consisting of two parcels that are currently residential outlots of the residential subdivision that you see to the south and east of the property. So these two parcels are proposed to be planted into one lot with this application as International Outreach Edition, named after the current church that owns the properties. So the property is in the R one single family zoning district with single family homes to the south and the east and multifamily properties to the north and west, including the application you just heard by Ms. Gross. The request is for a CUP amendment, so it's to the existing approvals for that religious institution, and then to allow multiple buildings on one lot as the new proposed building will be on the same, they'll all be on the same new one lot. The variance is to a portion of the parking ordinance, which requires that off-street parking areas be surrounded on the perimeter with a non-surmountable curbing of six inches. And they have requested this variance related to an easement, which runs through the property that it's encumbered by for a natural gas pipeline. Next slide, please. So the existing religious institution was developed in nineteen sixty-seven by a conditional use permit. It was amended at one point in nineteen eighty-three related to some signage, but has been operating as a religious institution under different names since that time. So the current occupant has owned the property since about the end of two thousand four, beginning of two thousand five, and they have operated under a few titles, but it's been the same underlying property owner since that time. It's currently known as International Outreach Church. As I mentioned, the property is encumbered by a large pipeline easement held by Magellan, which you can see to the left of the existing parking area on this preliminary plat. So the easement holder does have to approve any improvements within the bounds of their easement, and I'll touch on that later. Next slide, please. So the proposal is for a new building for the church to expand its classroom and sanctuary space. So the proposed building is five thousand square feet, and the expanded parking area will contain sixty-one parking stalls. And so improvements associated with this application are that the parking lot will expand. There will be new parking lot landscaping islands. The parking lot will be restripped, it's currently in need of that and redoing just the front entrance of that. And there's also an easement vacation public hearing scheduled for next week's city council meeting that's associated with this applicant, but not under review this evening related to the easement that you see coming through the proposed parking expansion. So the variance request to eliminate the curbing requirement within ten feet of the pipeline infrastructure is on the west edge of the parking area, and the edge of the parking does run parallel to that easement. And the ordinance requires that religious institutions in a single family zoning district be set back fifty feet from property lines shared with residential zones. On the, on all property lines, this placement of the building does meet that requirement. We did receive some public comment where a neighboring property manager was concerned with the placement of the building as well as stormwater infrastructure and drainage off the property. The location of the building does meet the property line setback for a religious institution, which is more strict than if this were to be developed as a single family home. Next slide, please. So there are existing trees on site to remain, and the applicant has provided some information indicating that new parking lot landscaping will be installed with the improvements. A condition has been added that a full landscaping plan and schedule be provided at the time of building permit application. Also, to be submitted at that time will be a screening plan for any of the private mechanical equipment, such as like an HVAC unit as an example, and a photometric plan to indicate the lighting for any new outdoor lighting installations. So the landscape plan that was provided does indicate a handling of stormwater management with an infiltration basin near the north property line, as well as showing drainage patterns on site. Next slide, please. So this floor plan, which may be a little hard to read on the screen, but it does indicate the interior of the new building, which will hold a sanctuary space for classrooms, new restrooms and a kitchen area. So code analysis will be reviewed at the time of building permit by our inspections team. Next slide, please. So the new building will be finished with stucco, and the roof will include asphalt shingles, which is consistent with the existing building on the site. The structure is proposed at twenty-one feet in height, which does meet the R one single family zoning district standards. Next slide, please. So for the variance request to eliminate the curbing requirement, the plans do show curbing along the perimeter of the existing and proposed expansion to the parking area, except for within ten feet of the pipeline. So the applicant and staff did discuss this issue for quite some time prior to formal application, and the proposed plan as seen in your packet has been approved by Magellan, the easement holder, as shown in the drafted encroachment agreement, which I also included in your background report. So the request for the western edge of the off-street parking area to not be surrounded in perimeter with the six inch non-surmountable curb. Within that ten feet is reasonable, the easement holder would not allow that concrete curbing as originally proposed on their plans. So the proposal is not self-created by the property owner, and the granting of that variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Staff is supportive of this request as outlined in the variance policy included in your report. Next slide, please. So overall, staff is recommending approval of the application subject to these kind of following conditions, so that a full landscaping plan and schedule be provided at the time of building permit. A screening plan should be provided at the time of building permit. A photometric plan be provided at the time of building permit, as well as lighting cut sheets for review. And that all outstanding city comments from the engineering memo dated March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty be addressed adequately prior to issuance of building permit, and that a low-impact development management practices agreement be executed and recorded prior to building permit. And so this item will be a public hearing this evening. I can stand for questions. Representatives of the applicant team are also available for questions or comments as needed.
Great, thank you, Sarah. Commissioners, any comments, questions? Okay, see none, we will move to the public hearing portion. Again, if you are on the Zoom meeting and would like to speak, please use either the chat feature or raise your hand feature, and the moderator will put you in the queue. Once I call your name to speak, the moderator will unmute, unmute you. Then please state your name and address for the record. And with that, I will open the public hearing at seven forty PM. Okay, does it look like there's anybody on Zoom who would like to speak? So at that time, I will open this up to any people who are calling in. If you would like to speak, please press a star nine to raise your hand and I will call on you. To speak, press star six to unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record. Okay, doesn't look like we have any telephone callers either. So at this point, I will close the public hearing and we'll round up to 7:41 PM. Commissioners, any other comments, questions? Commissioner Roberts.
Yeah, I noticed that we had an email from one of the residents of the True Guard Properties at 12761 Greenwood Drive in Burnsville, which would be actually right behind the new structure as it goes up. And so I took a drive over there to see what she was talking about in regards to how far it would be away and things like that. There isn't a whole lot of people looking at this building. There's a parking lot and there's really is only two apartments that have decks that would be facing this. Otherwise, there really isn't anybody that's going to be close to it. And on the northeast side of where this would be, I noticed that the trees are going to be, the trees there are a lot larger than 21 feet, which is the height of this building. So the trees actually block out the building as well. I was just concerned because you know how it is. Every time we get an email or letter from somebody, we like to do our diligence to see what they're talking about. So I just wanted to go out and look at it. The building size itself being, I believe it's 50 feet from the property line is actually quite a distance from where those parking lot garages are. Those are set back as well. So the distance actually goes beyond that. I just wanted to make sure that when we looked at this that I covered my basis on what decision we were going to do. So if those of you couldn't get out there and look at that, that was my observation. I just wanted to bring that up.
Great, thank you Commissioner Roberts. Commissioner John.
Yeah, to echo some of Commissioner Roberts' statements. I actually had an apartment that was right next to a church and as he was saying, there were, somebody was concerned about noise complaints and that never was a problem when I had an apartment basically at the same location to where these, this building is going to be. So I think it's actually going to be an upgrade to the area than what we currently have.
Any other comments, concerns, commissioners? Is there a motion? Commissioner Awad.
Thank you Chair. I will make the motion that the planning commission recommends to the city council approval of the application of International Outreach Church for a preliminary and final plat approval of a one lot subdivision to be known as International Outreach Edition Conditional Use Permit Amendment to allow multiple buildings on one lot in a new religious institution building. And variance from Code City Section 10-7-26-V Paragraph 7, which requires non-surmountable curbing along the perimeter of off-street parking areas to eliminate non-surmountable curbing related to the parking area within 10 feet of the Magellan Pipeline, located at 1512 Wood Hill Road, subject to the following five conditions, which are listed and I will not read. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Roberts.
I second their motion.
Any further discussion? Okay, see none. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Awad.
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson.
Aye.
Commissioner John.
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts.
Aye.
Commissioner Timmerman.
Aye.
Okay, so this item, the motion carries and this item will be heard on the city council's May 5th meeting agenda. So moving on to the sixth item, another public hearing for the city of Burnsville for rezoning from I-3 Office and Industrial Park to I-3 PUD Office and Industrial Park Planned Unit Development Preliminary and Final Plat Approval of a One Lot Industrial Subdivision to be known as Pinnacle Park Fifth Edition Concept and Development Stage Approval of a Planned Unit Development for Construction of a Municipal Building, which is a new fire station to be located south of County Road 42, east of Newton Ave, north of 143rd Street West. And this is presented by City Planner Sarah Madden.
Thank you Chair Henderson. I'm sure this next item will be very exciting for all of us. So the item under consideration this evening is a land use request for the city of Burnsville related to the plans for construction of a new fire station on a piece of property that is south of County Road, County Road 42 at the corner of Newton and 143rd Street West. Next slide, please. So the subject site is 4.42 acres of industrially zoned land surrounded by mostly industrial uses. So the site is bordered by a conservation zone parcel to the northeast, which contains an oak savanna. However, all adjacent properties are zoned. I-3 Industrial and Office Park and Guided Industrial Office in the comprehensive plan. To the north of Newton Avenue, there are commercially, commercially zoned properties such as the new Caribou Cabin that was just constructed, as well as some fast food. Next slide, please. So the property does currently exist as two vacant lots, which are proposed to be combined into Pinnacle Park Fifth Edition as one lot industrial subdivision. So the city did purchase the properties to construct and operate a new fire station one as a replacement to the existing facility. Municipal buildings and structures, including the storage of firefighting apparatus, is a conditional use in the underlying zoning district. This request does include some deviations from city code and so the land use clearances for rezoning to planned unit development to incorporate the entirety of this proposal. Next slide, please. So this plan may be a little fuzzy, but the proposal is to construct a three-story 44,200 square foot fire station. Building footprint will be 27,455 square feet. There will be two main floors, as well as a small lower floor as well. Based on the parking ordinance, 51 parking stalls would be required. The site plan shows 62, so it's incorporating 44 site stalls proposed in the north lot of the building, which could be for visitors as well as administrative staff. And then 18 stalls to the southeast of the building for firefighter staff, which would be separated by a gated area. The deviations requested are outlined in your background packet and they are to allow a rejection in the building perimeter landscaping requirement, which staff supports as a large portion of the building perimeter is dedicated to fire apparatus space, to allow a retaining wall exceeding eight feet in height in the side and rear yard, which staff also supports. This would typically be allowed by CUP and it's been incorporated into the PUD request. To allow landscaping installation less than the ordinance requires, which staff does support and I'll provide some more information on that in detail when we view the landscaping plan. And then the final deviation would be to allow driveway entrance widths to exceed 24 feet in width at the property line. Code would allow this deviation with the support of the city engineer and the proposed width for two driveways, for the two driveways, the southern and then the southwestern, can be supported to accommodate fire truck turning and access. The staff would support that as well. Next slide, please. So the new fire station contains both administrative offices as well as some public meeting space for department and public use, indoor and outdoor fitness areas, residential spaces for the firefighters. And of course, the fire truck base for vehicles and equipment and just will be a significant expansion and functionality from the current fire station one. Next slide, please. So the proposed building uses a mix of brick, cast stone and composite wall panels with some metal and color accent materials. So the majority of the proposed building is those two stories with heights that are ranging from about 27 feet to 40 feet in height, which does meet zoning requirements. The number one is proposed as part of the architectural design in two locations, as an example of building expression, which is a marketing tool that hasn't really yet been used in Burnsville and which is an item on the commission's 2020 work plan. So this is a decorative design on the building. It's level with the panel surrounding it and made of the same materials as the building, not protruding in depth as if it were to be a sign, not painted as if it were a mural. So the, kind of a new tool would not be considered to be accounted as part of signage, but as part of the actual design of the building. So the building architecture does go above and beyond ordinance standards based on materials used, glazing used, and the unique elements in the design. Next slide, please. So this grading plan shows some of the steepness in the northeast corner of the property and illustrates the extent of the retaining wall proposed. So the retaining wall does snake around the east and the north of the building. It ranges from 12 inches in height to 13 and a half feet at its tallest point. And so it is a very large and long retaining wall necessary for development on this site. Next slide, please. So landscaping on the site is one of the areas in which the applicant is requesting PUD deviations. The site exceeds over-story tree requirements as the existing oak savanna in that northeast corner of the property provides a number of mature existing over-story trees. The site is steep and complex and due to the existing preserved oak savanna and the placement of the retaining wall, much of the open space is not necessarily suitable for planting of trees and shrubs that would be able to kind of hold and stick and survive. So plantings are proposed still throughout the development within the parking lot landscaping islands at the perimeter of the site and in the public areas where there will be a small place making and public art space, which has been set aside adjacent to the retaining wall just north of the public entrance to the building. So the deviations proposed are to install 750 versus 964 shrubs, 40 ornamental trees versus the ordinance requirement of 64 and seven evergreen trees versus the 32 that would be required based on the open space for the property. As well is the deviation to the building perimeter landscaping to accommodate the fire truck bays and door areas. Based on the use and the site conditions, staff is supportive of these landscaping deviations as outlined in your background report. Next slide, please. So some benefits of the planned unit development request are that the proposal incorporates that public art element, incorporates building expression, a unique form of building materials and marketing, which is new to Burnsville, and that the site will be dark sky compliant with LED lighting. It will incorporate bicycle parking in front of the main public entrance. It does exceed overall green space requirements in that 50% of the site is green space. And then uses lead principles as a guidance in the building design and that the parking lot landscaping requirements also exceed the ordinance standard. So staff is supportive of the request for preliminary and final plat, the rezoning and the concept and development PUD subject to these three conditions, that any rooftop equipment should be screened from the ground view, that the sign, while signage will be proposed as individually cut letters, a minimum of one inch in depth, and that all outstanding city comments from the engineering memo dated March 20th be addressed prior to issuance of building permit. So this item will be a public hearing. I can stand for questions and members of the applicant team, as well as some other staff are available for comment or questions when called upon as needed. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any comments, questions? Concerns? Commissioner Timmerman. You need to unmute yourself, Commissioner Timmerman.
I'll learn one of these times. Thank you Chair Ms. Madden. I'm curious what the timeline is for development and opening the new facility.
So I can direct that to the applicant or possibly BJ if needed. I do know that I believe groundbreaking would be September is the current plan as proposed and kind of guided by the city council and it looks like BJ's nodding his head, but I'll let you speak if you have anything additional to add.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, thanks for taking the time today to review our plans. Yeah, we're hoping to break ground in September and it's about 14 months of construction. So it'd be fall/winter of 21 rough, is a rough estimate at this point.
Any other comments? Commissioner John.
I was just curious on the location. It's further west and further south in the current fire department? Was it just because that was the space available? Or what was the reasoning behind that?
Madam Chair, members of the commission. Yeah, we did some pretty extensive research. We looked at nine different parcels. As you know, trying to get four and a half acres of clear land to build a fire station within about a mile of where the current station one is is challenging. So this is one of two primary sites that we really narrowed in on and it became the most suitable site with easy access to County Road 5 and County Road 42 for response. We did quite a bit of GIS analysis to make sure that we could still meet our response time expectations within the community and it actually positions us well for the west side of town, which is a little more difficult to access currently.
Commissioner Roberts.
This might be out of order, but I guess I don't care at this point. While we got Fire Chief Youngman on, I just want to say thank you from all of us. We want to give you a round of applause for all the stuff that you're doing. And I just want to say shout out to you and your crew for everything that you guys do for us. I'm all for this. I'm not going to say anything bad about it. I just wanted to say that and get my word in.
Great.
That's going to kill me later, but okay.
Anything else commissioners? Okay, so we will move to the public hearing portion then. So again, if you are using Zoom meeting and would like to speak, please use either the chat feature or raise your hand feature and the moderator will put you in the queue. Once I call your name to speak, the moderator will unmute you. Then please state your name and address for the record. And with that, I will open the public hearing at 7:56 PM. Does it appear to be anybody in Zoom? So if there's anybody on the telephone who wishes to speak, please press star nine to raise your hand and I will call on you. To speak, press star six to unmute yourself and state your name for the address or state your name and address for the record. Okay, now it doesn't look like there's anybody on the phone. So with that, I will close the public hearing at 7:57. Any other comments, commissioners? Is there a motion? Commissioner Roberts.
Yeah, I'm that the planning commission recommended to the city council approval of the application of the city of Burnsville for rezoning from I-3 Office and Industrial Park to I-3 PUD Office and Industrial Park Planned Unit Development preliminary to the final plat approval of a one lot industrial subdivision to be known as Pinnacle Park Fifth Edition Concept and Development Stage Approval of the Planned Unit Development for Construction of a municipality building, which will be a new fire station to be located south of County Road 42, east of Newton Avenue, north of 143rd Street West, subject to the following three conditions.
Is there a second? Commissioner Timmerman.
I am excited to second that motion.
Any further discussion? See none. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Awad.
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson.
Aye.
Commissioner John.
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts.
Aye.
Commissioner Timmerman.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries and this item will be on the May 5th city council meeting agenda. The last item is updates. Stephanie, updates?
Yes, your next planning commission meeting will be held on May 11th, I believe. And keep an eye on the development map on the website for updates on what those items will be, since we're not there to pass out a draft agenda for you. And that is all of my updates.
Great, thanks. Commissioners, updates? Okay, so then just as a reminder.
Commissioner Henderson, if I can just add a couple more updates?
Yes, please.
Yeah, so the next planning commission meeting is on the 27th. At that meeting, we will have two items to speak about. One is the farmer's market special event discussion and then one on the transit-oriented, transit-oriented development ordinance. And then I also want to remind commissioners, maybe those watching, that there is a deadline on May 1st to apply for our advisory commissions, not only the planning commission, but our economic development commission and Parks and Natural Resources Commission. and Parks and Natural Resources Commission. And we have one spot that is open, currently filled by Nick Anderson. Nick, you're very welcome to apply again. But as, as I know, the term does come to an end, so you will have to reapply. And then the second meeting in May, just to note on your calendars, it will be held on Tuesday, May 26 instead of a normal Monday meeting. So again, it's Tuesday, May 26 for that second meeting in May. And that's all that I have.
Great, thank you for that. Okay, so I just wanted to remind everybody that members of the public may submit additional public comments relating to the items on this evening's planning commission meeting agenda until 4:30 on Friday, this upcoming Friday. What is that date? Here. Is it May 1st? Sorry about that, guys. These comments will be included with the city council background for consideration on their May 5 meeting. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn? Commissioner Awad?
Thank you, Chair Henderson. Excellent job running the meeting. Thank you, staff, for excellent presentations. I move that we adjourn.
Commissioner Roberts?
I second that motion.
Any discussion? Seeing none, can I have a roll call?
Commissioner Awad?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner John?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Timmerman?
Aye.
Hey, motion carries.